Back into open session, please rise for the pledge.
Be more difficult for me than I think. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Read our no public comment?
No, sir.
Cheryl, accept a motion for consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Oh. When you were looking at the contracts for the consent agenda, there is a a typo on one, but we will fix it. But for NGL. If you look at the typo, it says that this contract is valid to the 25th of 2025. And last time I looked, that passed. So I think they mean 2026. So I'd like to approve it as is. Knowing that we'll fix the date, okay? So.
Is that at the very top where it says agreed and accepted?
Yeah.
There's a in the middle.
It's right here. Right there, it just shows, it's just a typo. No big deal. Alright, so back to consent agenda. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
There is an item on there in regards to Stiefel and about the potential of a bond issue. It's not saying that we are or are not, but I just want to clarify that it's something for us to consider in the future.
Okay. Yep. That that works. And when you get back, I have questions about that anyway. So but we'll do that for tonight. Any other discussion? Seeing that all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes. Surplus property? Oh, consent. Moving on. Good. I feel much better.
See, another boat.
We can sit ready.
Wow.
Another boat. I got two.
You got two? To to get me out?
No, get rid of those crazy new contraptions.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I I can I can resolve that right now. I know where the keys to my car are. Okay, insight design studio architect. Is that you, young lady? Alrighty, give her a microphone. Alrighty. Dr. Underwood, you can hear us, okay?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to start this off?
Well, I'd just like to thank Ariel. I believe Patrick's with her as well. They've done a lot of work, went through our buildings, received some feedback. It's the beginning of a process and I just appreciate their forward thinking and they've got a lot of information here. They're going to try to cover in about 10 minutes. But hopefully it'll be insightful.
Only one of them, so she only gets five.
I do apologize. So Aaron Hardy was supposed to be with me tonight. His household came down with strep, so we said, stay home. Nobody wants you here. We got that.
Thank you for not coming. Now you get your five minutes back. Actually, no, this this could be a kind of an ordeal. So go on.
Perfect. Alright, well, I think this is about a quarter my presentation, so I am going to have some help with me tonight, just to make sure I'm covering all the talking points as well. But thank you for having me here tonight. We're really excited to share this first phase in the long range facility plan. Tonight, we're I gotta get my arrow straight on this. Perfect. We like to say tonight, we're not here to really make any judgments or any resolutions. We're not asking for approval on any kind of long range facility plans, but we're here to share that first round of information. So since May, we've been working with the district to gather data. That's data on from the staff via surveys that went out in May before everybody left for the holiday break. That's also been principal interviews where myself and Aaron toured with all the building administrators and principals to understand their perspective on their facility, how well it's working, what are some opportunities that may be within it? And then also a separate team of architects, engineers, and educational planners did facility assessments that really looked at the building as a building versus a building for education. So tonight, to give you kind of a look ahead of where this process is going throughout the remainder of the year. Not wearing my glasses, so I'm going to look at this screen where I can actually see the letters. We do have our first committee meeting starting next week. I think some of you or all of you may have seen that flyer that went out last week, I believe. But we are going to be planning to do four committee meetings that will take us through this process where we engage with the community administrator, staff members on not just what a potential first round of consideration should be for facility improvements, but to really put a plan in place for the next 10 years. And I like to say those plans, you know, year zero to two, they might be written in pen. Years three to five, maybe they're in pencil. You might need to erase some things and change them around. And then five through 10, maybe more of a napkin sketch because we know that there's a lot of things that can change in a handful of years. The rest of the schedule is built upon. Should there need to be any board decision or direction ahead of next year to set the timeline up to be able to accommodate that? And with that, we are going to get in to the first portion of this presentation. So.
Real real fast, I just wanted the board to know, I asked Dave to step into those meetings. Normally I would try to be there, but I'm going to be gone for two of those meetings. So Dave's just going to do those meetings and then I'll probably sneak in for one or two of them, but it won't be the two middle ones. Okay?
Can any of us sneak in there and attend?
They just wanted one board member. So I just wanted you to know.
Alright. To jump into the first piece here, I'm going to give a high level scorecard for each of the buildings. And then later on the presentation, we're going to go into more detail for each of those facilities. But this first portion, the facility analysis overview, this is the piece I mentioned where we had architects, engineers, and educational planners go out to each facility and really view it as how is the building performing as a building and how is a building performing as a tool for education? Each team really brings in their own perspectives to that. So we're viewing on one side from the engineering perspective, the age of the systems versus anticipated lifespan for them and trying to quantify what that means in relation to that overall age of the building. In terms of the scoring, you can see blue at the top and kind of red as we get to the bottom. We kept it pretty simple. It's an A through F scale, so it's very should be pretty familiar, you know, As are harder to get. They're almost impossible to get unless you're a really new facility. Bs are really great environments, perfectly suitable for education and the types of activities going on within them. Cs typically mean there may be some items within those facilities that you need to address or potentially look at some type of replacement for that facility. Maybe there's capacity that ties into that as well. And DNF are when you want to start having more serious conversations about what is the long term plan for a given facility. So the first chart that we're going to look at here is for the educational facilities as on their own. So starting with Grace Early Childhood Center, all the way down to Scott Educational Center at the bottom. You know, from a facility assessment standpoint, this information probably isn't too surprising or shouldn't be too surprising. Cambridge and Gladden are definitely candidates for deep consideration, but we also need to consider the capacity in those facilities. They're very full and we'll see some more of that information here in just a few moments. And similarly, Belton Middle School and Yocum Center are also full buildings and because they are much larger buildings, the costs associated with improvements in those kind of goes tenfold comparatively to an elementary school. So again, I think there's a lot of deep conversation needed on those facilities and what next steps may be needed to.
Wilkins is the same age as the others. As Cambridge and Gladden, I believe. Within a year or so. Anyways, go on, sorry.
And it's not necessarily tied to just the year, but the types of improvements that have gone into that facility. The type of facility itself, if it's multi-story versus single story can have different factors, especially when it comes to accessibility and kind of equity between those levels. So overall, I mean, really solid B students on here, but a couple that we're going to want to study more as we move into the fall as well. The next slide I have here is going to be your support or your other facilities. You can see Central Office is included in this chart as well as the Turner Facilities Building, the Technology Building, Southwick Stadium, and the Bosco Building. The two I want to really point to on here are the facilities in the Bosco Building. Yes, they have the lower scores, but we also have to take into account that these are comparatively scored against the quality of an educational environment and there are different types of facilities. So I think it's probably worth noting those and having conversation about them again, moving into this fall. But looking at them as the tools that they are within the district and understand them from that perspective. The D and C may not necessarily reflect the type of environment that it needs to be for the activities going on within them. Alright, so as I mentioned, we're going to go into more detail for each of those facilities here in just a few minutes. But the next piece that I want to touch on is the capacity at the different facilities. So there are two factors that we look at when studying capacity. The first is going to be the educational capacity. This is if a building was 100% full. Every space in that building was utilized 100% of the day, which leaves you very limited to no flexibility. So what we instead like to look at for a building is the functional capacity. What this does is it allows for flexibility within the space. Now, what counts towards functional capacity? For the elementary schools, that's going to be all of your standard learning environments. So all of your grade level classrooms. It doesn't take into account specials because typically you have students rotating for those activities to give teachers their planned period or their break period. At the middle school level, it's going to be similar, but we do include the specials, but we don't include sped or resource spaces. And then at the high school, it's all of the spaces combined. So there is going to be a different functional capacity. We're trying to achieve or target for each facility type. There are some additional factors that go into it as well. There. And then we have a really fancy formula that we use for all of it that I promise makes sense, but I won't bore you with all those specifics right now. So what does that mean for the buildings in the district? So when we look at our elementary buildings, so from Cambridge to Mill Creek, we're definitely seeing some yellow again. Yellow is like, okay, maybe we need to look at this. Orange starts to get oh, we're a little bit higher than we want to be. And red would be, okay, we need to make some adjustments immediately in order to address the concerns here. So I'm going to skip ahead of my sheet so I make sure I don't miss anything here. Overall, I think the thing to highlight here is that K6, they're all going to be over 90%, which means increasing capacity is likely something that needs to be considered because moving boundaries or allowing open enrollment may not fully address the challenges within those buildings. Okay, the next round of facilities that we're going to look at for capacity.
Wait, did you have a question?
Just so I'm clear, when you're getting above the 90, I guess in the elementary above the 93%, we need to start looking at things.
It means that those environments have close to no flexible spaces, no room for a program to change, for a bubble class to come in. It may mean that they're utilizing some spaces that may not typically be utilized. So for instance, storage rooms, offices sometimes get taken over for program spaces because they need it.
Okay. And then when you get going, we kind of explained, and I think I know why the middle school higher end is lower and the high school higher end is lower. I think I know why. Because of the, you know, there's more spaces there and things.
For, sorry, for this slide?
Right there, it says high school 80 to 85%. So your higher ranges.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep. So the elementary schools, because there aren't typically as many. There isn't as great of a variety of special programming included in those. You're not having to navigate as many different spaces throughout the day. So at the middle school and high school level, because there is additional programming included, that target utilization does come down to be able to allow flexibility within that programming, knowing that it's something that can often change regularly. So to cover then the middle school and high school, again, you're going to see a little bit of a higher percentage there at the high school with a little bit of a lower percentage than at the middle school. We did take Yocum into account as well to kind of study the high school as its own entity, but then also in tandem with the facility across the street. It brings it down to 90%. So I think that by potentially having an opportunity to continue expansion into Yocum, it will improve the high school capacity and the flexible environments within that space as well. One thing that we did just know from our tours, but it's kind of hard to quantify and see in the information that we get is with the students, high school students who do go out for their real world experience, how that impacts a building throughout the year. Is there a period of time where all students are at that facility, but then all students are doing real world? Does that work in shifts so that maybe this higher utilization that we're seeing isn't as significant or not felt as much as we may see in just the kind of raw data that we have. So I definitely think there are more questions to ask about how that works from a programming and curriculum side.
Is it based on square footage?
There is some square footage that plays into it. Also, the types of spaces. That's another thing actually that's really valuable to consider is all those spaces may be assigned for one year as let's say there was an empty classroom. The empty classroom was assigned as a school psychiatrist. So you have much fewer students but occupying a large space. So understanding how spaces are used can also impact this. So there may be a need at some of these facilities for smaller group spaces, which would then open up more full classroom spaces as well.
Okay, so you, but you combined the high school and Yocum into one square footage base?
Yep, and specifically the spaces within Yocum that have been.
Used for, so not the entire building of Yocum, just the the parts are being used. Okay.
Just the spaces that are currently being used.
That's where you were throwing me for a loop.
Apologies for that. Okay, are there any other questions on this piece? Alright, we're going to start going into enrollment projections beginning with historical enrollment because all this information about how the buildings sit now is really useful, but we need to understand what's happening with the students and your community as well. Is there growth? Is there decreased attendance? Is it staying relatively along the same population that you've had? So this historical enrollment information comes straight from DESI. You can notice one point here in 2020, 2021, there's a little bit of a dip. That was very common. We know what happened during 2020 and a lot of kids had alternate learning environments at that point. And what we've begun to see, and you guys have also begun to see is a slight increase back from that low number. So that is the high level for that historical piece, but we're going to look at it a little bit greater detail. So first focusing on the primary buildings and their historical enrollment. There's been a little bit of a percentage decline compared to the secondary buildings over the past 10 years, but it does appear that there is a slight uptick in that enrollment as of the past year or two. So continue to potentially see that trend. In the secondary buildings, we have had actually similar annual declines with those from about 1.1% plus or minus over the past five years. What does that mean for projected enrollment? We do do high level demographer data for this. We know that that's something the district's also actively working on is having a an up to date report. So I always like to equate it as if you don't have a demographer, one will be appointed to you. So that's the data that we've used in this report here. It is something that as that final report is available and ready, we would run a roll that in because we look at more census data, just information straight from the census where a demographer will actually study real estate. Are there plant developments in the neighborhood? What do birth rates look like? So they're grading a much more granular level of potential growth. And so in order to fully study that, that's going to be the report that we want to look at, but from a high level, just with the census data available. You can see in the yellow line, that is the projected growth. So you can say it it stays pretty stable, just plus or minus. It moves just over that mid datum line. Of course, the higher end, you can see escalating there over the next 10 years and then towards the lower end, not quite as significant, but it does show a potential drop in that enrollment. Again, we're going to look at this, the primary and the secondary level. Primary tends to be pretty flat, a little bit of a rise as you start to get past 2030. And then similarly with the, excuse me, I am skipping a slide. The utilization impact. Sorry, I did not want to give you guys whiplash working between these. Okay. Projected enrollment for the primary buildings again, kind of that day middle datum line. And then as we look at that utilization impact, we're going to take that blue line. That's your educational capacity. So again, that's that 100% line. And then the purple, that's that functional utilization. So where we want to be sitting around. So even taking into account that future projected enrollment, you can see we continue to be above that functional utilization for the facilities. So again, we're not seeing a significant dip in the projected enrollments for those buildings that we're already seeing feel pretty full where they are today.
Sad, I, your purple and my purple are different. So I'm trying to, that it's the line on the bottom?
Oh, sorry. Yep, the line on the bottom.
Okay.
And again, we're going to keep looking at the primary buildings. So you can see with that projected enrollment. Again, if students continue to go to elementaries within the district, there may be some minimal impact here, but based on the projections, we really need to consider some additional capacity at those facilities. Okay, the next piece we're going to look at are the secondary buildings. And again, you can see that yellow line tends to stay pretty relative to where it's at today. It goes up.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but going back to the primaries, we don't see Grace included on here. Is that in its own beast because it's our pre-K program?
Yep. So pre-K don't typically fall in the same way because they are programs that can change so much district to district and how much programming a given district chooses to provide for that program. So we know some districts have very small early childhood programs. You guys have a
Massive.
Facility.
Yes.
With some of the best playgrounds I've ever seen.
Yeah, yeah.
But from a capacity standpoint, just looking at projections, it's not something you can easily project. It's more about the purview of the given district.
Okay, I just, I had seen it in different various parts of the presentation, so I wasn't sure if we had data directly correlated with that building.
Not for the capacity piece.
Okay.
From the facility assessment and the condition of the facility and its its fullness, we do have that information.
Okay.
Purely from capacity and DESI standards, we do not.
Okay.
Alright, so again, we're going to look at the secondary buildings. This is that first slide for the projected enrollment. Again, that yellow line stays pretty stable. It comes up a little bit. It goes down a little bit, but overall stays on about the same trajectory. So again, we're looking at what does that projected enrollment mean for the utilization in those facilities? It stays pretty close to that bottom purple line with the triangles. So again, it's kind of skimming. Is this working? Is it not working? Are there maybe just some tweaks we can make to have these facilities perform a little bit more comfortably? And then again, here, looking at that on the percentage base. We do get an idea of the ideal utilization rate. We get closer to it. But I think that's more a result of the middle school being slightly underutilized and the high school being slightly overutilized if we're looking at just that 86% there cumulative. Alright. From this piece, we are going to move on to the survey review. So before we get into those, this is going to be a breakdown of each of those buildings and the feedback we got both from the facility assessment and from the staff surveys. Are there any questions as it relates to the capacity portion?
Responses were from whom?
Sorry, excuse me?
The responses for the survey were from whom?
They were from both administrators and from staff, both classified and certified. And I'm glad you asked because we've got that information. So in total, we had 257 responses, which is appropriate for a district of this size. That's about the number of responses we'd expect to see. You can see the breakdown by building. So of course, buildings with more staff had typically higher number of responses. Then as you get into the smaller, you can see that number.
Two responses from Turner?
That is what we had seen.
Yeah.
Twelve people, one person working.
Alright, so we're going to start right at the right at the lowest grade level. So Grace Early Childhood Center. Again, this is going to be a familiar looking graphic. We're again going by that A through F scoring. So overall, from a building as a facility, the condition of the building, we're not studying capacity as part of this piece. That's an important thing to note here. Some of these buildings are going to be full, but you may not see that reflected in a score for this portion. But overall, from a building, solid B student. There are definitely some comments staff had about storage in the facility, circulation within the building and in of itself. And I think you can start to see some of that as it relates in the function. And then the mechanical as we tie into the systems as well.
Considering that building was never meant to be a school, that's better than I expect.
Two things I want to note in here. So we've got our overall score. And again, that's going to be the cumulative of the columns that you see to the right. The assessment score, that is going to be the score straight from the facility assessment with the architects and engineers and educational planners. The FCI, that's the Facility Condition Index. This is going to be a score that takes the items that were noted within that assessment and actually ties them to the cost to make an improvement. So to give a really drastic example, if there were a lot of finish related items in a building, there's going to be a much lower cost associated to improve finishes versus if a building had significant mechanical or structural issues. So that's why you can start to see in some of these columns, the scores may change between them. And then we also tie in a deferred maintenance factor into that as well. So that doesn't mean making any upgrades, but kind of one for one replacements, repairs of items that may have scored slightly off a perfect score. So you can see again, a cumulative nature of those. We've got a few photos, which looks like two of them decided not to show up tonight. But just a few snapshots, we took all of these photos while school was still out of session. So I want to note that in any images, you may see things just arranged a little bit differently. And there was probably some cleaning going on, I imagine.
I think most of us have seen these schools in action.
I'll go over that one quickly then. So this piece here is starting to incorporate a lot of these survey feedback. So for each of the facilities, again, we had a lot of great feedback. Let's say we had 24 people respond for a building. Well, each of those 24 people may have had 10 different items that they wanted to make note of. Overall, in the facilities, there's a lot of pride in being part of the Belton School District. We've definitely saw comments about the improvements that had been done across the district. They were very appreciative of them. They were recognized. Mr. Allen got a call out for some of the school pride at the high school, bringing that in the past few years. So there's definitely things that people are proud of and they love to see in their building. But what you'll see here are areas where we did ask, you know, in the next zero to five years, what may be some opportunities for improvements? So we start to break these out by categories. And you can see the number of mentions for each of them. Again, there's a lot of it here. If there were specific ones, anybody wants to talk about the same meeting, I'm happy to. In the effort of time, I'm going to keep them moving. These will be the data points that we take into our first community meeting and start to have discussions on.
When you discuss square footage of this building, you took into consideration the colleges, correct?
So we didn't study the capacity at this building, the Early Childhood Center.
Right, but when you're looking at square footage, you still included that square footage?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. Yes, I'm going through my rolodex of the buildings. I do recall capturing the cottage in that facility as well. Overall, there were a lot of comments about just the tightness of the space. It feels very full. And because of that, they may be lacking small group spaces, resource spaces, you know, areas that once might have been storage are now being used for different functions. And so you start to see a lot of overlap in these categories. I'm going to keep them moving here because I think we have twelve or thirteen of the buildings. So please stop me if you have questions on any of them. The next up is Cambridge. And if you remember, Cambridge and Galadon both had two of the lower scores for the elementary buildings that we had seen from a capacity side at the beginning. And we start to see that in the facility assessment as well. So you can see a handful of Cs there, a couple Bs. I mean, the electrical system and the panel in that building seemed to be in good condition, but I know that there were, I think it was one or two aging panels that may be due for replacement soon. Again, a few photos. I know you guys are familiar with this facility. Would it be okay if I had you flick through these? Thank you. And again, back to that staff feedback, this building was pretty tight. And again, you start to see that in the responses that we received. There were also some comments for some ADA accessibility in here, maybe some noise concerns, which again, I think can be tied to how many students are in this building. Cafeteria felt a little bit small for how many students they had going into that space daily.
I do have a question. I've seen, this is the second one where I've seen environmental concerns. Can you elaborate more on that?
Yep. So older buildings had older materials that went into them. So environmental concerns could be, you know, floor tiles of a certain size that may indicate they need some testing for what type of materials are in them, asbestos. Yep. Similar with, similarly with ceiling tiles, that's where we saw some of that material as well. If a building didn't have a well-performing humidification system, there may be some other concerns about the air quality in that space. So you'll typically see that in some older buildings unless there had been significant improvements to that space throughout. And so we do start to see that comment repeated in multiple facilities across the assessments that were done. Yep. We can go to the next one. Oh, sorry. This is the first one. I, it's going to have the capacity piece tied into it. So when we talk about how many environments are being used for teaching, but then also other uses, this map is going to demonstrate it for each building. So number one is going to be your standard learning environment. Two is going to be your flex learning environment. You'll see there are no twos in this building. Specials learning, so your gymnasium, art and music and library. And then you have your special education and your student resource spaces. You can just start to see how each of these buildings are organized with that program. And then again, the analysis review for capacity, this is a repeat of the information we've already seen. But again, it's trending over that line. We would like to see it at with potential for continued growth within that building and the students surrounding it. Next one is Galadon. Galadon is going to be almost a carbon copy of Cambridge. Sister school, similar layout, also challenged with the age of the facility and just the types of needs that it may have. So we had a lot of similar comments for space concerns here. I think it was, Galadon had the lower level?
No.
Cambridge had the lower level.
That's the only difference.
Cambridge, yep. Cambridge was also addressed with elevator and ADA access to that space. Galadon, of course, does not have that same concern, but still some challenges with capacity in that building.
Ariel, just a sidebar real quick. We are talking with our new demographers. We do feel like the numbers are wrong in Galadon and Cambridge because Cambridge is actually the building that has the downstairs and should have a larger capacity. And, and the old demographic study that you guys are utilizing actually has Cambridge with a smaller capacity size. And so we're asking them to review it, which will, it'll change because those numbers are not correct.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. Do you know when that report is going to be available or ready, just kind of district wide?
I'm hoping October, but there's no guarantee.
Okay. It's still plenty of time to react to any information that may be different from the report, the initial report that we have tonight. And I mean, that's the nice thing about having so many meetings spanning a handful of months is that there's time to react. If there are additional questions that need to be answered or further assessments that need to be done, we have the opportunity to do that. Again, some photos of Galadon appears that the two images don't want to show up to any of these. So we're just going to keep it moving. And again, this is the staff survey feedback as it relates with the grading, of course, on the left-hand side. Some of the highlighted ones here are going to be just general updates and modernization throughout the facility. And again, that can have overlap with storage, casework, teaching surfaces are all going to be tied into that piece. Expanded access to restrooms. There were multiple mentions for that as well as the building feeling just a little, little noisy. And again, you're going to see that same plan diagram for this building. And the next slide is going to be that utilization as well. So again, blue line is a hundred percent capacity, purple line is kind of that functional. So where we are today is going to be on the left. So you can see we're above that currently, but according to the demographer data we have, which we need to keep looking at, maybe this isn't as accurate as it's reflected in real time. We keep going. So Wilkins Steam Academy. Again, we like to say solid B student, always areas for improvement. Some of those being just the function of the space itself. It's a very unique program. It has a lot of emphasis on hands-on learning. And because of that, the spaces that go along with it need to change, but also need to be provided as well. So if we start to look at the, we can go to the images next. And we're familiar with that one. We can skip down to the survey feedback. There are a lot of comments about the building capacity. The size of the cafeteria was mentioned quite a few times, and it does feel a little bit smaller, especially with some of that serving line and scramble that bleeds over into the seating space. Acoustics also tied into that as well. Playgrounds and emerals, activities, really just some asks for updates or upgrades to the equipment out there, as well as some surfacing improvements. And then again, under the aesthetics, maintenance and materials, more comments to address the acoustical needs between floors, classrooms and cafeterias. We can see that plan diagram as it stands today. And the utilization information tied in over the next ten years. You can see it's, it's full. And I think I remember multiple conversations about there being a pretty significant waitlist for this facility too. Okay. Kentucky Trail is going to be, is it the newest building other than the improvements that have been done at the high school?
Yes.
Okay, yep. And you can see that reflected in the score. So again, it's a great facility. A lot of the comments I saw that were provided here, and we can just skip down to those in the staff survey piece.
Well, the prior principal really annoyed us for money.
We can tell the building's been taken care of very well. The comments we did see more of tended to be, I like to say, not necessarily superficial, but not necessarily items that impact direct daily curriculum and core classrooms. So they wanted a lot more play areas, maybe some shade structures on the playground, outdoor learning environment. We did have multiple comments about potentially needing to address some roof leaks in that building. There were a couple areas on the roof when we did that facility assessment that had standing water on them. And it looked like from inside, you could see some discoloration and a few ceiling tiles. So whether that's already been addressed or just something we saw because we were having a lot of storms earlier this year, it was something to make note of.
I could say, I thought we did roofs. About to lago. Yeah, that's true.
We did.
It was quick.
Go on.
All right. So we can keep going again, see that plan diagram. And the utilization for that building. Now this one's also a little unique because I know that there are other district programs housed in this building currently. Special education being one of them. I think they have some early childhood students. So you could see some of the feedback from the staff also related to that program. So if that were ever to change, it would also change the overall capacity of the building. So something to consider kind of in the greater realm of the district is programs that may be housed elsewhere that could potentially shift in the future. Mill Creek Upper Elementary, solid B student, always room for improvement. We can skip down to the staff feedback here. So I think the most mentions we had, yep, were under the kind of classroom environment. So there were a lot of mentions about just having some maybe upgraded furniture that provided more flexibility and learning environments, of course, based off of the age of the students. They want to have more display areas and more areas to display student artwork and projects that go in. As well as the classrooms, there were a few comments that just said, maybe they feel a little bit full compared to what your caps may be. Maybe there are more rooms in this building that get closer to that cap versus being a little bit under it. Okay. Diagram as well. And the utilization for that building. I think we'll just keep going over those and revisit them at a later date when we have that demographer data. Okay. So that brings us to the first of the secondary building. So the middle school, it used to be your old high school. So the facility itself, you can see that in the layout, having multiple gyms. There's one or two additions that went into that facility over the course of its life. And you can start to see the impact of that as it relates to now, a middle school and the program and function that need to go within it. So overall, because there is just a lot of square footage, there's also a lot of square footage that maybe isn't as utilized as well as it could if we were just looking at a number. If we said, can't remember what the square footage of this one was. Let's pretend this one is a hundred thousand square feet, but because of the additions over time and how programs have changed, well, maybe you're only utilizing effectively seventy-five percent of that. So we may have too much space in this building or may need to be able to utilize the space differently. You can start to see that in some of the feedback points as well. Need for just overall modernization and finish upgrades. You're just starting to see the age of this building. When you tour it, you can see some deteriorating materials, both interior and exterior spaces that aren't used maybe because of the ease of accessing them. Maybe they're not used effectively because of the circulation paths. And then what was another key one on here? The plumbing system and the environmental concerns. So again, not fixes that feel more aesthetic and kind of superficial, but fixes that have more substantial dollars that are associated with upgrading them, repairing them. We can go to, you can see the diagram again. Building is full, but it's also a larger building. There was a little bit of wiggle room here at the middle school from a capacity standpoint. And that will take us then to the high school. High school has obviously had a lot of projects that occurred within it in the not-too-distant past. So between those improvements that have been done and just the age of the facility in itself, it's performing really well. You can see some As on here, which again, we like to say they're really hard to get, but you can see the impact of the quality and the care that that building has had in the report itself. So not to say there's not room for improvement. So if we go down to the staff comments, a lot of the discussion centered around just wanting more breakout spaces, spaces for students to collaborate, to have more hands-on learning within the space itself. A lot of the classrooms are interior to the exterior walls. So access to natural daylight isn't as equitable across all the learning spaces. So there were plenty of comments for that as well. And then the last piece on there was furniture. Furniture was another one that had quite a few mentions, just maybe some requests for some more flexible furniture in this space as well. But overall, great building, a great overall analysis of that. Now we're going to start looking at kind of our other and semi-secondary buildings, but I don't want to forget Yocum. Yocum's a unique building. I got lost.
Aren't you being kind?
We, so we're, we're partnering with a few high school students actually, and we had them come into our office at the beginning of summer, just for a half day of shadowing and, you know, show them the life of an architect for a half a day and what fun things we get to do day in and day out. And we actually had them imagine a new life for Yocum. Like, hey, if you were going to take this facility and imagine it for all the things that it could be, what would you put in there? And I'm always so amazed when we ask students a very basic, open-ended question, just how wide their creativity, but then also their application of the things that they're doing every day can be seen in that. So it was really exciting to see that. And I'd love to see that continue into the fall as we start to talk about the facilities in the district. Because I think there are a lot of improvements, room for improvements at Yocum. The spaces that have been updated have been done so well. And you can see that they're performing phenomenally. There were botics lab there. We went in when there were students participating in there and we were just talking with them about different filament types and what type of pits that they were working on. What was their next prompt going to be in the next competition? You can see a lot of excitement in the space that they have and being able to spread out and use that space as a tool for their education. And I think there are a lot of opportunities for the rest of that building to be able to perform in a similar manner for future programming as well. So a couple pictures in there. We know a lot of that building is not actively occupied. There's a lot of rooms used for storage or other types of secondary activities. The gaming lab was a really nice setup as well. But we did not have direct staff feedback on this space. In and of itself, I think most folks, when they did the survey, they selected high school and didn't select Yocum. So we tried to pull out just some itemized feedback from the report itself. So again, it's a difficult building to navigate. Whether that's improvements to wayfinding or actually changing circulation paths may need to be something that's addressed. Utilities to the space, if it were to continue to grow into a fully utilized space, may not be fully sufficient for the quantity of students in there. Looks like there's a two and a half inch water line, which we may want that to be a little bit larger depending on the activities going in there. But in areas where updates have been made, the finishes, fixtures and equipment all appear to be in great working condition. Okay. Next, you can see again, just identified this handful of rooms that are currently being used. And then Scott Education Center. Again, it's a beautiful facility. It appears to be working well. I wouldn't take these Bs as honestly that there's even too much room for improvement because again, we're looking at the building as it relates to an educational facility. So sometimes these secondary or athletic complexes don't quite score the same way. And I don't think I had really any comments other than maybe the HVAC in the locker room wasn't circulating quite as much, but honestly, I've never been in a locker room that smelled good either. So it could be the activities and the types of bodies going into that space too, but maybe something to just take a look at in the future. And the next few, we're going to go over pretty quick. I believe the next one is the central office. Again, there's been improvements that have gone on in this building where they've been done. They've been done well. They've been noticed. It's just a continued study on what is the additional programming in this building? There are parts of it that aren't used or had been used previously, but maybe aren't fully activated currently. So just as those spaces are needed, addressing them and maybe studying them for the needs that need to go into them and making the like improvements that have already been done elsewhere. And we've just got the two, I think Turner and Technology Center are going to be next. Turner Facilities Building. So again, I kind of take this with a grain of salt. It is a facilities building typically messier activities going on here. A lot of people coming in and out, a lot of storage of materials, a lot of fabrication in the space. So there may be room to make improvements in it, but it would really need to be assessed for what is the function of that building need to be to have it be successful? Are there significant challenges with storage, with access, with equipment or for what's going on? Is it functioning well for the team that uses it?
I have a question on that one. It said that there's two folks that completed the survey, but on here it says there's no survey feedback. Could you talk me through that?
That's a great question. The two items, I'm trying to specifically remember what they were. I think one of them they had to have done with, been with access and just being able to access the site. I can't remember the second one, but they tied in to the scoring that we saw here. So we didn't include the direct feed. the direct feedback in and of itself. Yep. And then the last one is going to be the technology building. Again, it's a newer building. It's been taken care of really well. The feedback that we saw on this was just a need for some more parking with the students that are coming over to this building daily. It's really tight from what I've heard. I remember going and doing the interviews. I had trouble parking. So you can see it, and it may be something that's an easy item to provide a remedy for as well. The other piece in this was maybe just having some more small group or shared spaces for staff, but overall performing and doing well for its needs. Perfect. Did we put that in there twice? Oh, Scott, I'm sorry. Southwick. Southwick, performing well. I'm going to want to go back to Scott. I misread them. Southwick Stadium, performing really well. Again, newer building, great needs in here, maybe just studying the HVAC a bit. And then I apologize. I'm going to blame the two kids I had. I feel like they gave me a little bit of dyslexia. Sometimes they get mixed around, but Scott Education Center, I want to make sure that we touch on this because there were a few feedback points here as well. Overall, the buildings, of course, lived a few different lives over its history. You can see a little bit of that in the facility, but you can also see the level of improvements that have gone in to create the type of program that's in it today. So accommodating spaces to be able to handle safe rooms or sensory spaces are present as well as having additional program space for the library and the cafeteria. They all seem to be suited well to the population that's there. The items that we did hear feedback on were some of the ceilings are maybe needing to be repaired specifically as it relates to the sensory room. There's a lot of activity that can go on in that space, maybe students that are escalating and are coming down from being escalated. So maybe looking at that environment and the materials within that space to just make sure that they're durable and can withstand some more movement than a traditional learning environment. Some of the electrical panel boards are near the end of their lifespan. So again, something to study. And then from the corridor perspective, maybe nice to find, see some wayfinding, some way to show kind of the environment and life of the building represented in those spaces. And lastly is the Bosco Building. So this one's unique because as I understand it, it's not being utilized for district program currently. Correct. Okay. And we tried to take that into account with the scoring as well. There are definitely rooms that you can tell hadn't been touched in a long time and others that had been occupied more recently. So again, there's a mix of quality of spaces, but it's more of a conversation about what is the actual programming of that going to be if it continues to be?
Seems like most of the stuff that Scott is what we moved out of Bosco. Is that right? Yeah.
So more of a conversation about what's the, what's the next steps for that building more than anything. Okay. And then lastly, I guess this might be it. So here we really have just the overall ranking, taking all that feedback into account and starting to see how do those different categories of potential improvements start to rank. So overcrowding and capacity is going to be the item that was most mentioned throughout the survey. And then you can see how the rest of the items start to fall below that. So course, comments for furniture and maybe classroom functionality. And then working all the way down to cafeteria and commons, more of those shared spaces. Storage, I've never been in a district where I didn't have folks say that they wanted more storage, but I definitely think it's something that's evident in your buildings that are fuller here. And then of course, working our way down to technology improvements, I think smart boards and projectors kind of varying between facilities and conditions of those technologies was something that was noted frequently. And then of course, natural light. Out the bottom, just having access to natural light in their learning space.
Are smart boards still even decent technology?
It's not something we typically see going into buildings as frequently as they had been, but we still see a lot of interactive displays going in.
They were the big rage for a while, I know.
They were. Yep, we see, I mean, we see almost every kind of solution in varying amounts, but there are still a lot of interactive flat panel displays, whether it's a smart board or other type of technology. As I mentioned, this was a lot of data today. It's a lot of first round of feedback across the district and all the facilities within it. We're not saying we have all the answers or any answers that we've even uncovered the right questions to be asking, but it does give us a really solid foundation as we move into the next steps, which is that community and committee engagement. The first questions we'll be asking are what are we missing from this, from the folks that are intimately personal and knowledgeable on these buildings, you know? Is there something that didn't make it to the list that surprised you, something you thought might be more people would have provided feedback on? And in the first meeting, we'll also go through a ranking exercise that don't take into account costs associated with projects. That's definitely something that will come in because that will have a big impact. But if we were just going to look at these kind of on their own standalone pieces, how might we start to rank improvements for each of the facilities in terms of priority and need? And as we continue working through meetings, dollars will be tied into that. We may start to tier by year impact, which ones need to happen in zero to two, three to five, five to 10. So you can expect to see more of that information as we continue moving forward in the process.
Well, I mean, we have a lot of buildings that are 40-plus years old. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
It gives us something to look at and the next steps. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Yeah, a lot of them are 65-plus. Yeah, I, I say all the time, I'd love to have a 55 Chevy, but I'm not going to drive it every day. So some of these, so thank you. Okay.
My apologies.
That's all right. You have anything you need to add to that, to the inside design?
No, I think it's just a great start for one of many steps we need to go through in reviewing our facilities and it's probably past due.
Yeah. Okay. All righty, Academy's update. Man, don't feel the need to stay for the rest of our meeting. Okay.
Okay, so I'm really excited to share with you guys some updates on our work in the academies over the last year. As you know, one of the data points that we use kind of to judge how good we're doing is the number of market value assets that our, our students are earning, our graduates are earning. So I kind of wanted to start just with a really quick reminder of what those market value assets are. So we have things like our industry-recognized credentials. These are industry standard type assessments that students take to demonstrate their understanding or their ability to work in a certain industry. We also have internships and client-connected projects, and also nine or more college credits and entrepreneurial experiences. So these are what we want every one of our graduates to have before they graduate from high school, one or more of these items. So just to give you a little bit of an update on where we have come over the past few years with our market value asset attainment. Our overall attainment has gone from our class of 2022 had 17% market value asset attainment. And then we went to 48% in '23 and 64% in '24. And then this last year, we went to 77% of our students earning at least one or more market value assets. So we're really happy with that. That's a, over that four-year period, that's a 353% increase in MBA attainment. So we're really happy with that. Obviously, we still have work to do. As you know, you just approved a new graduation requirement for our class of 2029. So we know that we have to get that 77% up to 100%. And we definitely have a plan in place to achieve that moving forward. Just to give you a little insight on where that growth is really coming from, a lot of it is those industry-recognized credentials. We've seen some growth in that from 2022. We only had 21 students earning one of those credentials. And then we went to 29, and you can just see steady growth all the way up to our class of 2025 where we had 53 students. We're never going to have a tremendous number of IRCs because these are incredibly specialized. And we only want our students to earn an MBA in something that is beneficial to them. We don't just want to have them earn an IRC just so we can say that they got one. We want it to be something that's actually beneficial to their career pathway, but we're really happy with, with this growth. That growth really has come from an expansion of IRCs in our IT pathway. And a lot of that is, is our students are going over to IT and doing internships over there. And they're working in Dr. Manley's class to earn those certifications. So that's new. We have an increased number of students who are earning IRCs in Pro Start, which is our culinary program. So we've seen a lot of increase there. And of course, our biggest increase is with our construction students. So we routinely now have 25 to 30 seniors who are graduating with their Level 3 carpentry certification through the carpenters union. So that's where we've really seen the most growth with those IRCs.
Dr. Sizemore, do you see, obviously you just pointed out, I think, three specializations that you see more kids getting into. Do you see some that where kids really aren't navigating towards? And how do you, what's the word I'm looking for here? How do you try to change that or make a difference in that?
Are you talking specifically about industry-recognized credentials?
Yes.
Yeah, so we definitely have some pathways where we don't have students earning what the state says is a market value asset. So we have kids that earn like an OSHA 10 certification, but the state does not count that as a, as a market value asset. So to reach that level that the state considers, we have some pathways that we're continuing to work towards getting that content kind of embedded in the curriculum. And that's where the important part really comes in because these aren't tests that are designed for high school kids. They're tests that are designed for adults. And unless we teach to those, those standards in those IRC assessments, they can be really, really hard for students to pass. So we try to be really intentional about making sure that we don't put IRC assessments in front of kids who can't be successful. And that's, that's really why it's a kind of a long-term process of growing that number. Does that answer your question? Okay. Also, we still continue to benefit from our relationship with Cass Career Center. We still get lots of students who get CNA certifications and other certifications through that program. So that's a big chunk of that growth that you've seen. The biggest chunk would come in work experiences. So internships, they're, they're kind of the thing that's most glamorous that everybody sees and that we post on Facebook and everybody loves to see. We still continue to do those, but internships aren't right for every student. So we need to be able to find real-world work experiences that aren't an internship, but are equally as valuable to students. So a couple of years ago, we turned our focus to client-connected projects, which is really students working with industry professionals to do a real-world project. So Ariel was just here. She mentioned working with three of our students, which we're so happy that she's doing. They're participating in a client-connected project because they're actually helping with the long-term facilities plan for the district. So in a sense, the district is the client, and those students are participating with the architects in, in doing that project. So that's kind of an example of a client-connected project. This is where the most of our growth has come in our market value assets. Once we turned our focus to those, we, we jumped really high with class of 2024 to 126 of our seniors participating in one or more of those. And then this year we had 138. Another area that's really been, oh, sorry, I got pictures. Always got to have pictures. Internships, obviously, we're still doing those. We don't anticipate that those numbers will grow a lot. It really just depends on what's best for that student, but internships are still a very important part of of what we're doing, and we definitely want to highlight those. But the client-connected projects are becoming more of a an opportunity that we can get more students the real-world experience that that benefits them. So here's just, you know, various pictures of our students participating in internships. But then our client-connected projects, like this is an example with Parks and Rec, with the Arboretum, our Science and Industry Academy over the past two years has been working with them on the identification of tree species over at Cleveland Lake with the land that was donated to the, to the city for the Arboretum. So you can see here, they're actually, these are students that are in our ag program. They're actually going out instead of just learning about these types of things like forestry, they're actually going out and they're surveying these, these trees. They're cataloging them with, with GPS markers using a tool that the city has provided. And then they're doing the old-fashioned hammer and nail and putting a tag on the tree. Because Parks and Rec has to identify every single one of those trees before they can move forward with, with the work they're doing. So that's a great example of a larger-scale client-connected project. And then of course, our ever-popular cyber seniors or tech tutors, where our students assist senior citizens with their, with their technology needs is always a a super popular program that our students participate in. The last one that really has been a big part of our growth with MBAs is our dual credit. So for it to count as a market value asset, we want them to earn nine or more college credits. These are only for students, obviously, that are in pathways that require college. We don't want, if a kid's not going to college, we want them to do something else that's going to be beneficial to them. So we have gone from the class of 2022, we had 25% of our graduates had at least one college class. In '23, that went to 35%. And then '24, 38%. And then this last year, we went up to 42%. So we're approaching half of our graduating class participating in at least one college class. And one thing we're really proud of is 24% of the class of 2025 earned nine or more college credits. So a quarter of that graduated class earned a market value asset in, in college. And most of those are being paid for. So it's, it's really a great benefit to the students. A lot of that has come from our early college programs, which were new last year. So that's our Academies of Belton Business Institute and Public Service Institute, which are taught at the Training and Technical Center of Cass County with Longview instructors. Really great program. The Belton Education Foundation has been paying for all the tuition for the students, and it's, it's really been a great program. This is our second year of that. We have more students this year. And this year, we're really excited about a new program, which is our Academies of Belton Healthcare Institute, in which the Cass Community Health Foundation is paying for all of the tuition for these students. So that's been some of the reason that we've seen so much growth in our, our dual credit attainment at the high school. You might have seen the Martin City Telegraph recently. They did an article on, on this program in the paper a few weeks ago. So that's kind of an overview of kind of our successes in, in students getting those experiences when they leave. I know one of the first questions is going to be what's next. So I'm going to preempt that and just briefly, briefly cover from the academy's perspective on some of the things that we're working towards. One of them is we've been really good. These are our Ford NGL standard, our strands. I'm not going to go into them, but the, the second one is, is about the secondary experience. We've been really good with that, with our master schedule and getting our high school organized in a way to support academies. Business and civic engagement has been exceptional. The first one, which is transforming teaching and learning, we've been good at, but we haven't been great at. So that's our biggest focus. This year, we have a focus on design thinking as professional learning for all of our high school teachers. And they're going to be using that framework to get better at doing projects and get better at doing those client-connected projects. Also, as you know, the strategic plan, that strategy one, we will transform student learning by guaranteeing authentic, relevant educational experiences. One of the action items in that was the development of a pre-K through 12 portrait of graduate. And that serves kind of as the foundation for a lot of that additional work that's going to come, like taking the academies to the middle school and creating, you know, a through line between pre-K all the way to 12 to make sure that we're all aligned in what our goals are for, for our students and their outcomes. So last year at about this time, we started the process of developing a new portrait of a graduate. And the way that looked is we had a community convening in October of last year. It's about 30 community stakeholders. And they identified key characteristics and qualities that we felt were essential to success. These aren't academic items. These are like essential skills in life. And we created five draft key attributes. And then we came back in April with those same 30 community stakeholders, and we identified specific skills for each of those attributes and identified. for each of those attributes and identified draft POG designs. So I'm really excited to share with you guys our new portrait of a graduate that came out of that work. So this is it. I also have a an actual version. Just keep in mind, this is printed on not high quality paper. It's just kind of a draft. But wanted you to kind of see it in person as well. And so this is this is what our community has identified as being really important for our students to master whenever before they leave high school. So, you know, we can all agree on what things, what work skills kids should have to be successful. But if we don't have it as part of like our everyday work on the wall and we could see that, then we can't really say that we we are effectively putting that stuff in our curriculum and making sure our kids are actually practicing those things. So this is just kind of the first step. Over the next year, Dr. Mock and Mrs. Brown with the Character Council will be taking this work and going further with it. Having teachers look at developing rubrics and figuring out where in what grade level we can implement these attributes and skills and and make sure that we're preparing our students to be more successful whenever they get to high school and then beyond high school. So we're really excited about kicking that off. And the portrait of our graduate, just briefly, is kind of the North Star. Like it's what we say is important to us. We know all the academic stuff is important. That's goes without saying. These are things like what kind of person do we want our pirates to be? What kind of person do we want our graduates to be? And so it it really should guide almost everything that we do in our classrooms and as a district. And so that's what it's kind of meant to serve as. Another thing real quick is you may have noticed something else new. This is our old Academies of Belton logo, which served its purpose and was created for the original group. But as a part of this process of creating a new portrait of a graduate, we did create a new updated Academies of Belton logo. And what we're really happy with here is that it really honors the work that the original group did. So it keeps that that tagline of navigating new horizons. It keeps that compass rose. So the people who did that work can still see their work in in this new, I think, more modern logo that we'll that we'll be moving forward with from here. So that's everything that I have for you guys. There's obviously a lot of other stuff going on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, folks?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate the what's next. I I know the staff gets tired of hearing. So I I'm starting to see a trend here. You got I I've worn you down.
Hey, you just got you just know it's coming, so you got to be prepared.
All righty. Dr. Underwood?
Have a great evening.
Anything on that from you?
No, Dr. Sizemore, thank you very much. And yeah, it's great information. It's been a lot of work behind the scenes with the time and effort, let alone the conversations we're having about trying to expand other levels and really just seeing the progress of our students. And once again, if you're ever in the high school, I mean, talk to our kids and just ask them what their plan is, what their goals are. And it's really refreshing to hear a lot of them have some type of idea. They may not know for sure, but at least they can have a conversation about it. And I think so many times in the past, you know, kids were just trying to pass classes and graduate. But I think there's a whole lot more to it now. And I think Dr. Sizemore has a ton to do with that. So thanks.
Thank you. Sick leave report.
Yes, just a quick update for you on our sick leave pool. We staff have the opportunity to donate a day to the sick leave pool. And and if a time were to come that they would need to borrow from that for a qualifying event, they could do so. So this is just an update on what we currently have. You can see there that five staff paid off their balances of those sick leave days that were borrowed. Four rolled balances. And then we had one borrow from last year. So or the beginning of this year, my apologies. Quick update.
Any questions? Dr. Underwood?
No, sir.
All righty, assessment plan.
Okay, this mic works. I have three things for you tonight. The first one is our assessment plan. This is just a brief overview of all of the assessments our students take. There are really no changes in it. The only one change worth noting is we were notified that our fourth graders at Cambridge will be doing the NAEP. So it's a fourth grade or eighth grade year. So Cambridge and the middle school will be doing the NAEP this year. So that's been noted. Everything else is pretty much the same. Our end of assessments will be May 15th this year for our EOCs and grade level map test. So with that,
Dr. Mock, for our general public, you might just give a brief of what a NAEP.
Oh, sure. This is a national test that students are taking over the country. And a lot of times they will come out with scores that compare our students to other fourth graders across the country. Not naming the students, but in generalities. And so you can kind of compare where our students are compared to others in that grade level. So we've been getting scores from our eighth graders. But if you look at the NAEP for reading, it really hasn't changed in the last 20 years. It's been pretty stagnant of scores of how kids are performing across the country in reading and math. So but we do it when we're chosen. So and it usually happens in January is when the assessment. So it doesn't interrupt any times during our typical assessments for EOCs or MAP. And there's usually about 50 kids. It's not the whole grade level. Sorry. Duly noted that.
Any questions on this?
So the administration asked the board for approval for the assessment plan for the 2526 school year.
Motion to approve the 2526 professor or assessment plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2526 assessment plan as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Professional development plan?
Okay, this is also us. We have our
Sorry.
Yep.
Dr. Underwood, I've been going to you for all of these. You all right with the assessment plan? Anything you need to add?
No, I just wanted the NAEP piece pointed out. So Dr. Mock did a wonderful job.
Okay, well, I'm trying to remember to go to you on every one of these. All right, so professional development, sorry.
Yes, we will kind of line out what our professional development looks like for the 2526 school year. You can see this is part of our requirement for MSEP six. And also it gives you an overview, kind of a high level view of what's happening and some of our goals. So the goals, one, two, and three, you'll see that they are aligned with our strategic plan. And you'll see heavy literacy, professional development. We are continuing our our commitment to having every teacher in our elementary settings with letters trained. We started that last year. So we have actually a celebration. We have 41% last year and we are the year before and we are at 56 the end of last year. So we hope to have almost 100% of our teachers training letters one and two. And it's been a huge commitment. And I really appreciate all of our teachers coming together and participating because the Phoenix Awareness Fluency, it's teaching reading is extremely difficult. And I'm really proud of our teachers. They have to pass to a test at the end. It's 80%, so.
So the letters training is an option?
No, we are committed to having every student read by the time they graduate from our system. So in in fact, there are pluses to having all of our teachers do this at the same time. So that if one classroom is a teacher that's taught in letters and is proficient and another student is in another classroom that the teacher isn't, that's not equitable. So we want all of our kids, teachers to be equipped to teach reading. You also see we're getting into writing. You saw a little bit from Dr. Sizemore about design thinking at the high school. We're also working with looking at our culture of character. You also saw that. So there's going to see a lot of connectivity of what's happening either with the strategic plan, professional development and teaching and learning. So with that, the administration asked the board to approve the PD plan for 2526 school year.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the professional development plan for 2526. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Dr. Underwood, anything on this one?
No, sir.
Okay, literacy plan.
This is our last one. There are two links in there. One is just kind of an overview. The second link you will see is the actual comprehensive district literacy plan. Dr. Seidelman has been working with our teachers. She and I have been working with our administrators. We've been putting together this literacy plan that's comprehensive. So it's pre K 12. And our goal is to make sure, number one, that all kids can read. Two, that teachers are equipped with the skills necessary to teach reading and also making sure that we have interventions and support and resources to be able to teach reading. So you could kind of see all of those goals and our priorities for literacy. If you go into the actual document, you'll see there's a lot of different teaming from the district level to building level that we will be starting to implement. This is new coming from our state and is also a requirement from our MSEP six to have every district have a literacy specific plan. Is there anything else that you want to add or to that? Okay, so.
I do have a question on the training pieces on some of this. How does that work when we have turnover with staff?
Well, the good thing is letters has been a big component of our state and it's supported through our PDC, which is our regional professional development. We've actually had teachers coming in with letters training already. So it's not just a Belton thing. So yes, there'll be turnover. Once we have this last year under our belt, it'll just be onboarding our new staff. So we've got a plan for all of that. Our next step is for our secondary is called Aspire, which is letters, but for secondary. We have about 11 staff members that have volunteered to go through this, myself included, just so I can see what it looks like. I'm a former English teacher at the high school. So I was never actually taught how to teach reading. And we know that there's a gap there that we have. Sometimes students aren't at grade level at the high school. So that'll be something that will be coming for our secondary staff. But we have a small group are going to, at the end of the year, say, okay, what does this look like for our secondary? Because if you are teaching social studies or math, you're still teaching reading. So there's actually different pathways in Aspire, not to get in the weeds. But we're excited for to extend then for our secondary staff. Yeah, you're welcome. So with that, the administration asked the board to approve our comprehensive literacy plan for 2526.
Motion to approve the comprehensive literacy plan for 2526.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive literacy plan for 2526 as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Underwood?
I'm probably as much more excited about this opportunity just to get all of our staff in the same direction and have a framework and guide for literacy because you cannot read, cannot comprehend, you're not doing math, science, other academic aspects of learning. So super excited. And the irony is, I came back to Dr. Mock to talk about this item, actually from this Mid America meeting, probably about three or four years ago. And she said, we're already piloting it. So she was already ahead of the curve. So super excited.
Perfect, all righty, enrollment update.
I have some enrollment numbers for you as of nine o'clock this morning. This is where we stand. Our, including Grace, our overall enrollment is 4,409, which is down 55 students from last year. This around this time last year. And then without Grace, so just kindergarten through 12th grade, we have 4,131, which is down 42 students from last year. Our smallest class is currently kindergarten with 288 students. And our largest class is the senior class with 349. Some building information this year. It's it's always interesting how it shakes out with the buildings. Cambridge is down 55 students. So they have a total of 452 this year. Gladden is down 23 students and they have a total of 331. Hillcrest is up by 12, so they have 498. Kentucky Trail is up by 48, but of course, they have the 40 preschoolers there this year too. So they have 403. And Mill Creek has 489 and they are up by 46. BMS has 630. They're down by 25 this year. And the high school has 1,329, down by 44. Any questions about that? We will continue to refine this and I'll probably have another report for you in October like I did last year.
Okay.
Keep it with the numbers. We're still doing enrollments.
I was going to say, I was curious about like those missing students that you guys reported to us like just curious on an update on how that's panning out.
We are still, secretaries are still contacting some of them. SROs did go out to some of the residences. We do have updates. Some of the students did have just they they hadn't finished the enrollment form online and just didn't click the final button. So secretaries went through and updated that. There have been a variety of different reasons why people haven't enrolled. Some people just are still enrolling and maybe transferred schools or waiting for unknown reasons or were coming from a public private institution to now the public. So there's a variety. Some of our are returning students that haven't enrolled yet. And Anita had, my secretary, had several enrollments this week again.
On those ones that didn't fully complete the enrollment, has their student been going to school?
Sometimes, yes.
How are they even?
Well, they didn't press the submit button. They could see all the documents in our school. So they had everything. But then when the secretaries did a final audit, they saw that some of them hadn't had that final submit button.
But they're still able to get a schedule or a class assignment or what? Interesting.
They're still in the system because they were returning. Many of those kids were returning.
Okay.
I know you said kindergarten's the smallest. Do you have, is there a certain grade where you saw the biggest drop in attendance?
Let's see, like, for instance, last year kindergarten was 297 and it's now 288. The fourth grade went from 329 to 294 or 292, excuse me. Some rose though. For instance, the fifth grade went up from 297 to 326. So you kind of see the trend as the cohort is moving through to the next year. And there'll be plus or minus a few. So you can analyze those trends, but I don't see a dramatic. It's just 20, 30 here and there.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, our free and reduced, yeah, our free and reduced percentage, Ms. Cramley, as far as where we are.
We've been 56% right now.
That's about where we normally are, isn't it?
Well, that's yes, where we want to be. We were around that. We were around that at the end of last year, but now we're here.
57, somewhere near last year. Like, okay.
So we've, our secretaries and Ms. Ellison has done an outstanding job of following up with the people who hadn't completed those forms or the people that did have errors on them or needed some clerical work done. And we've really had a great push since enrollment ended to get the rest of the forms turned in. So I really appreciate all the work at the schools and with Ms. Ellison. Ellison.
All righty. Okay. All righty. Legislative update.
Yes, Jefferson City has been busy, as you guys have probably noticed in the news, as they have looked, had a focus upon property tax recently and how to abolish that. Of course, everybody'd be in favor of that. The problem is, is they don't have any way in which to fund schools in absence of that. I know that Mr. Allen has done some work on our, the potential revenue decrease. Mr. Allen, can I put you on the spot as far as an estimate for if we did not have personal property tax? If not, I know a number.
Sure, I just need to pull it up.
So in essence, it's about $7 million, I believe is what we were looking at, the potential loss for personal property tax, just in Belton. And so, once again, I go back to the fact of if we have a decrease for like that, what's the plan for, uh, to fill that gap and they don't have one?
That's not 190. That's the new one.
No. Yeah, these are the new ones. I believe there's four different joint resolutions that they have looked at in regards to the personal property. 190 was the senior citizens, property tax freeze, Senate Bill 3 is with the stadiums and that, our county was selected to be a 0% increase for personal, or for property tax, which is residential. And now these joint resolutions are looking at doing away with personal property tax.
Yeah, it's coming. All right, so that's a disturbing number. So, all righty. Anything else?
Yeah, we're meeting at Blue Springs Metropolitan Schools are all meeting in Blue Springs next Monday to go over a list of legislative priorities coming up for the session starting in January.
Okay. For the cooperating school district?
Yes.
All right, more to follow. Just read the news and get mad and throw stuff. That's what I've been doing. All righty. New business, MSBA policy 2025C.
Yes, administration would recommend the following policies as listed to be a first approval reading.
Oh, moved. Not gonna read them all.
It's just first reading.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of MSBA policies 2025C as presented. Any discussion? Once again, first reading. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're kind of slow on that one. Had to think about it. Any, anyone gonna vote now? All right. That passes. Glad that went away. Yeah. All right. Horizontal advancements?
Yeah, just a few horizontal advancements for you this evening. The administration asked the board to approve horizontal advancements as presented.
Yeah, nothing came up on mine.
Comes up from me either.
It comes up on mine.
There's three and four votes.
Motion to approve the horizontal advancement as presented.
I shared it with Dave.
We have a motion and a second to approve the horizontal advancement as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Substitute salary schedule update.
Yes. Just after doing some comparables and keeping us in the game as far as our rates and retaining subs, we adjusted our rates just a tad there to keep us in, in the market to retain subs. And we actually onboarded two subs today. So I think they'll be pleased with the new rate if, if that goes through. So the administration asked the board to approve the proposed adjusted sub rates for the 25-26 school year as presented.
Motion to approve the substitute salary schedule as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the substitute salaries, the supporting documents, substitute salary schedule as presented. Any discussion other than I can't talk at after eight o'clock? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, committee updates. We'll start with MSBA, but before you start, I'd like to appreciate all of you for covering down for me on my circumstances a couple of weeks ago for Region Four. I appreciate that Belton had a strong showing. And I did hear back from some Region Four people in the last week or two, and they had mentioned that you guys are all there and, and active participants. And once again, I appreciate that. So go ahead, Mary.
Okay. Well, we, we have the conference coming up next month, but the schedule and the agenda still isn't printed in detail yet, so we don't know what the breakout sessions or that schedule looks like yet. So I keep checking every day. We had, like you said, a good turnout for our Region Four meeting and we got a lot of discussion about our, a lot of our new policies with cell phone usage and athletes and, and different things like that. So it was, I think, well attended and well received both.
All righty.
Did we win that?
Did we win that?
Well, they did a drawing and Liberty or North Kansas City won it.
I'd go say... North Kansas City won, I demand a recount.
Yes. That was it.
Well, they had 17 registered.
North Kansas City did?
Yeah.
Well, we had nine there, I think. Yeah, because we had to get an extra chair for our table.
Yep.
And we have a photo to prove it, I think so.
Yes, I saw the photo. All right, Belton cares.
Meeting tomorrow night.
Do you want me to give a few updates?
You have some.
Okay. Saturday from 1:30 to 3:00 at the Curriculum Center, we will be cosponsoring with the district a graduated licensing law workshop for parents and students of new drivers. It's amazing the number of parents who don't realize that the rules are different when you're between 16 and 18 when they were new drivers themselves. And violations of those laws can result in your new driver losing their license till they're 18. So it's, it's pretty strict. We...
I kind of tied Belton cares and U-Matter Belton in the same, so.
U-Matter Day is Friday at the middle school and the high school. There's always a sign up genius link on U-Matter's Facebook page, or you can always get ahold of the foundation office and get signed up right now. I think all spots are filled, so we're not, you know, searching for people to do that this time.
Perfect, okay. Belton Meds Gala Foundation?
Um, yes, so as you guys know, they just recently had their gala, very, very successful gala at that. Estimated net proceeds are sitting around $67,000 right now, which is fantastic. Those are the funds that we use. And this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, so it's super important. But we use that to provide to all of our teachers and students throughout the district for the remainder of the year. Our upcoming events are going to be the BHS All Class Reunion, that is the week of HOCO, October 2nd. There's going to be downtown Belton on Main Street. There's the parade. There's going to be an alumni float on October 3rd. We welcome you to the All Class Tailgate, which will be before the HOCO football game. And then on October 4th, I believe, you have to buy a ticket, correct, for the lunch? That is, oh, yes, you do have to buy a ticket to the tailgate, but you can buy that there.
And you can do lunch in there too.
And then 10 a.m. on October 4th, the doors will open for that lunch at the high school if you would like to attend that. That's going to be for the Hall of Fame induction. But yeah, that's what we got rocking and rolling. Then after that, we'll start pumping out some details on the turkey bowl.
Okay. Perfect.
November 8th, I believe. I can check.
Anything for the city?
Actually, I watched it and there was a long discussion about tax abatements. There was actually three commercial properties and one residential property that were up to look at. And a lot of discussion was around work, physical work that had been done before it even got to city council. And, Norm, please correct me if I'm, if I say this wrong, was, and what had happened out of that was that basically any physical work that was done, and I don't mean like engineering surveys and things like that, I mean like physical work, would no longer be counted into the tax abatement number. So for instance, there were some roofs that were not included. I think of the two roofs, it was about $60,000 that would not be included in the number, which doesn't change the overall tax a lot, but it's still, there's a difference there going on between free work and work after it gets to the city council and approved. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
I could expand upon that. Actually, Mr. Daniels, we've had that happen in Belton one time previously. And by law, if they start any type of improvements on any facility, none of the abatements should be counted according to the law. And so where that happened before was with Masters Transportation. When Masters bought the old Ford dealership, I believe it was, they had actually started some of the work. And because they started some of the work, the entire abatement was voided because by law, abatements are in lieu of, or in light of, I would not own or do anything with the business if not for the abatement. Obviously, if they do the work prior to, that tells you that they're going to do it anyway. And so it should be the entire one. I don't know if that actually was followed or not, but that's the letter of the law.
Yeah, and I, I think they, I, just based on the conversation, I really think they got to a point where this is now, I, I don't know if it really became an amendment to the charter, but it really became a discussion. And that's the way Patrick Corcoran stated, that this is the way it's going to go going forward, because I think there had been some exceptions previously, so.
That would be unfortunate if they've made exceptions to the law.
And wasn't it agreed upon that they're going to make those more defined and clear for future references?
Correct. All righty.
It was an hour and 10 minutes.
All right, I think we have all the committee updates. Miscellaneous dates. September 22nd, no school, PD Staff Collaboration Day. September 25th, the Belton Chamber Glow Golf Tournament at 5:30. My assumption is you replaced me. Thank you. I don't think I should be putting around at night. Well, you just, you're not gonna have, you're gonna have a hard time not going into a golf sand trap again. I just wanted to clarify that. When we drove into the sand trap, the mayor was driving.
They don't, those hearts won't let you do that anymore.
October 7th is the homecoming parade. If you are going to be walking in the parade or riding in the parade, please get with Radar so that she can arrange that. October 4th, the Hall of Fame ribbon cutting and all class reunion at 10 a.m. Dr. Underwood, I was planning on attending in case you decided you wanted to sneak away. October 17th is no school, PD Staff Collaboration Day. October 23rd through the 25th is the MSBA Annual Conference. And I don't know about anyone else, but I'm pretty somewhat excited about this one. I'm really excited about Temple Grandin being the keynote speaker. So that's, that's a, a pretty cool one for me. As long as you've been on the board, sometimes you, you have a hard time finding stuff to do in the classes. And I, I'm pretty sure I will not be attending any legislative ones this year because I'm really trying to keep my blood pressure kind of low. So I think I won't be attending those. Dr. Underwood, we kind of discussed tonight and Radar, we'll do the board tours if possible on Veterans Day, November 11th, so you can arrange that.
Okay.
That we do. Any other dates that the chair is missing? The chair will accept a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, Norm?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
We're out of here.
Thanks, you guys have a great night.